I had a black dog.
Two weeks.
Sure, why ask me? Why, does Jeremy have one? Kind of love you there, Sherman.
We've got a little love.
You should see Monahan's dog, if you put a damn saddle on it. He gets bored.
Have you tried?
I have not tried to get some more pets. More pets.
I don't know if I'd let it scatter my dog.
Oh, the shot is across the bow, that's awesome.
Should they bid it out?
Jeff Ryan?
Yeah.
I'm really, uh...
You don't even see him.
No, he's usually at Jeff's house.
He's got some office gossip, you share with me. The money in that, you're gonna take that to the hatch up there.
Yeah, you're all in the game, game, they'll be coming tomorrow.
We'll call them as ordered. Start with Trump. Start with roll call? Monahan, Jones?
Yes.
Burman?
Yep.
That's him? Yes. And we have motion for the agenda?
I'll move to it.
Discussion? Call favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have motion for the call being two each and done.
Second.
Discussion? Call the favor?
Aye.
Please oppose your opinion, call your opinion. And, approving bills submitted for payment at bay? Take a moment for public comment, any public input on non-adjunct items tonight. We're gonna skip over the 705 hearing, we'll go to the second reading of ordinance 656, the Design Regulations for Accessory Building. Questions or a motion to approve second reading?
Please vote approved.
Second reading?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion? No changes from last time, same as what it was? More discussion?
The two things on this is size and setbacks, is that correct?
Yep, basically, yeah. They reduced the size, the maximum size, if you have enough square footage, from 1,200 square feet to 1,000 square feet. And then, basically, they kept the setbacks, um, five feet for anything that's 120 square feet or smaller, but then they raised it to 10 feet for any larger accessory building. And then the number four, the distance between all buildings must be five feet, that was code, and we've always been doing that, we just specified it.
Very helpful regulations. Any other discussion or question? Okay, we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Burman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
All right, we'll go to the first reading of ordinance 664, trespassing on city property.
Motion to approve the first reading of 664. Second.
Motion, second discussion? I would like to hear, so we're talking 664, correct? 664, yep. Tyrone, take the pad, podium please, if you could. And, um, just make sure I'm on the same page. The, um, there was no, i- if you find that a trespassing warning, I think is the right word, that's my question actually, is the first violation of warning, or is there a fee involved?
Uh, once, the procedure that's gonna probably happen is we're gonna get a complaint, or we're gonna have a crime that is committed on city property.
Okay.
Um, specifically, thinking about the vandalism of the park.
Yes.
Those, those are gonna be addressed, the officer's probably going to get a report done, I'm gonna know about it, I'm gonna look at the kids that were involved, or adults, you know, that, that's one scenario that we're gonna look at, is where I would go, I would follow up and I would issue them a trespass if they can't come to the park for six months.
Just the park, it's a city, it's a city property.
Yeah, city property, I don't know if we have to be specific, cuz it'll be Turtle Creek, cuz it'll just, you know, it'll go from our city park to Turtle Creek. Um, so I would say city property for six months. Um, the reason, um, so that, that would be the scenario where I'd go serve them the paperwork, then when they violate it, what happens is, uh, when they're served the paper, it gets, um, filed with our, one of our administrative secretaries with the county. It's actually put in the computer under their name, so if they were to get another incident at night, or, I would know about it personally, from doing the paperwork myself, and keeping a copy of who should or shouldn't be there. Um, and I know the names, I could probably rattle them off to you right now with the problems that we had this summer.
Right.
Um, or keep, at least come close. So, I would specifically know about it, the officers at night would run the name if they were doing the same things, he catches them in the park, they're messing around, doing whatever, he sees that they've got a trespass, icon is what we call it.
Sorry.
On, on their name, so he'll run the name, boom, it'll pop up trespass, he'll hit the button, it'll, it'll basically display the form, trespass form that says where they're not supposed to be at. And then say the park, and, um, he can issue a city citation, or he can just mention it to me the next day, and I'll go issue them a city citation for $50.
Okay.
The reason we wanted that avenue for the fine plus the actual criminal charge of trespass is, when you start getting into the criminal part of the juvenile system, we don't want any part of that, we'd rather go with the civil fine. That way there's actual punishment that we could administer. Um, I got several opinions on our juvenile system right now. I think the pendulum with the new administration now of the state's gonna swing the other way with the person they put in charge of, uh, public safety in South Dakota. I think it's gonna start swinging the other way to, um, address some of the juvenile issues that we've been having.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know, yeah, I'll talk to her.
Don't know, don't, don't hear.
But anyway, but we wanted to leave that in there, the ordinance too, and Teresa and I talked about is, we do have that adult that is presenting some sort of danger, some sort of crime, we don't want him creeping around the pool. Um, we don't need somebody, typically if we get someone who's, you know, maybe possibly anti-government, um, walking in here, say this is city property, even though this is a public area, he's starting to bother, you know, our threats that are made, or hanging out at the sewer plant, or hanging there, we wanna be able to give him that paperwork and have that option of that, as a, as an adult, we could just arrest him for trespassing.
Okay, now, this might seem like an off-the-wall question, and I'm sure my constituents will probably laugh at me, does the registered sex offenders come under this at all, in any way, shape, or form?
Does it what?
There are registered sex offenders, okay? We all know they're out there.
Yep.
We can find them very easily, okay? Um, can these individuals, because they're under that category, be, cuz if you, if you stopped them and you punched them up, and it popped up that word, okay? Would that, in your, in this, in this case, be a violation?
I'm trying to know what you're getting at, if they were to, let's say I would make that judgment call of whether they were a threat or not, and the officer would think of like,
That's right.
You've got no business here, at the pool, we're going to, this is creepy, we're gonna do a case report on it anyway, one of the first steps that we probably do is have that op, you know, that option of, well, we're not gonna wait for him to do something bad, we're gonna give him a trespass form, say, hey, don't come, don't come here.
Okay.
So that would be a really good tool for us to, to just initially say, hey, you, you're up to something, we don't like you here, we can see that you're a sex offender, you're by a rural public area with a lot of children, in swimsuits, this is bad, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, do a trespass. Now, if you wanted to fight that paperwork, um, you know, we can go under the code where we serve it on him, uh, I guess we'll, we'll cross that bridge we come to.
Okay.
My guess is...
You encountered that?
What's that?
You encountered that, or just a sex offender?
Oh yeah, we had a guy in Sioux Falls that was taking pictures of, uh, this is a while ago, but I mean, you know, we're doing it for a long time, so, no, in Sioux Falls, he was going around pools and taking high advantage points with, you know, $5,000 lens, the cameras, and taking pictures of these, and the real unusual part is he lived in a $400 trailer house, but he had all this high-tech surveillance equipment, and when we did the search warrant on narcotics, we found all this stuff in there.
Okay.
And actually found pictures of one of our police officers' children, in his swimsuit. And so, I mean, there, it's out there, it doesn't happen often, but, you know, I can honestly say this stuff does happen, and the motivation of a predator is boneless.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to disturb the pot.
No, no, that's fine, I, I, you can understand, when I, when my brain's working and I'm thinking about doing this, I've got a couple different scenarios.
I'm with you 100%, because I can't stand the fact that it's across the street from me, and Monahan gives me a hard time cuz the bathroom got vandalized again, and I did go out there and beat somebody up.
Right. And, and you know what? I'm hoping most of it, stuff will be solved by the threat of the trespass. So when I go and I, I issue them the citation, you know, or talk to them about it, say, you guys are gonna be messing around here, understand that we can have it so that you don't, you're not allowed to be here for six months.
Okay.
That might calm down some of the, you know, some of the behaviors.
Last question, cuz I have gone over, and, and actually talked to some, some youngsters, uh, after 11 o'clock, and said, you know, you really shouldn't be here, et cetera, et cetera. Um, what, you know, is the definition of, I think to you, we're messing around, I mean, I mean...
Oh, I, I think if we find out that they've vandalized something, and we got names that vandalized something, now if it's curfew, you know, hopefully with the 24-hour officer, he's gonna get bored enough where he's gonna be looking for things to do, and he can start writing curfew tickets and going that route too. You know, I mean, looking for stuff to do. And, that'll help also, but, you know, we, we got into a situation early in the summer where it was, you know, they're, they're burning the place up, they're did their vandalism, and we had a lot of names that we could've served them on trespass notice, and that would've kept them out of the park for the summer.
Really? Pretty good?
May not happen again, like I said, maybe just the red, and the fact that we have the ordinance is enough to, you know, do it, I, I don't like making up laws to not enforce them, or that are just arbitrary, but I think this is something that at least gives us a little bit of, you know, that we can work with.
Last question.
Yeah.
This should, would, could, create enough word of mouth, I'm sorry, I know, Burman is over here going... That, that, there'll be a trickle-down effect to this, I mean, to the point where, you know, teenager will talk to teenager, and it'll go wildfire from there. Okay, thank you very much, I'm done.
One other thing, well, I'll wait for the police report to do, some of the things the other officers identified too, but, yeah, we'll wait for that.
Yep. Okay. Sorry guys, I... Any other questions?
Discussion, poll.
Well, Monahan.
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Burman?
Yep.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right, we move up to the 705 hearing, renewal of city garbage license, Novak sanitary service, Kresman sanitation, and RBS sanitation. Motion to approve renewal for city garbage license for Novak, Kresman, and RBS. Second. Discussion?
I got it.
Yep.
Is that just for curbside stuff, or is that...
RBS is just roll-off.
RBS is roll-offs, so if anybody would get a roll-off, then allow them to come into town, pick up the roll-off, and drop it off and stuff, so...
Right, so that's...
The other two have curbside, yeah.
Now, maybe there's volties wants to bring in a roll-off they can't, right? That's it.
Shouldn't, yeah, they should have a city license, they should apply for city.
That's what I guess they're asking. If it was just residential or bulls.
Call your options. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson? Burman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we move to reports. Tyrone, you have other things you want to go over?
Uh, looks like we have 153 calls for service, I think, uh, the month of, uh, before we had 280, so, I think just factor in winter months, and it'll, you know, it'll go down a little bit. Um, 22 traffic citations were written, which is about half of the traffic citations that were written in November. Um, and we had seven family dispute domestic violence calls, which is an increase over, but, but, you know, hey, it's holidays, so...
You're inside more, it's winter time.
What's that?
You're inside more, it's winter time.
Yeah, you're inside more, it's winter time, you should have more time with the family, but, uh, I, I thought that was kinda, as I'm going through the calls, that kinda stuck out for me, that, uh, the, the family disturbance and domestic calls, um, you know, the amount of...
Sure, sure.
Um, and then I was gonna comment, oh, one of our officers noticed that, uh, one of the park issues, again, got a complaint from, in the park, and observed eight cell phones plugged into our electrical outlets, so they're getting whatever their phones on, they won't turn their phones off in school, they'll put them in their lockers, or keep them with them, cuz they can't receive messages throughout the day, so what happens is their batteries run down during, during the day. So after they get out of school, then they run over to the shelters and plug their phones in, sit in the cars, or sit there, or, you know, like I said, it was a disturbance call, and he said, anybody shut the outlets down, so, yeah, during the winter months, if nobody's using it, Craig was ever able to do that for us, I don't know if it made an impact or not, but, it's just one more thing, if they want our attention, they're gonna get our attention, is my theory, so, um, these little tick tack things, I guess, eventually they'll get targeted, maybe, again, behavior modification is what, is what we're after, so they could get calls called out.
How are you finding things on Mickelson?
Um, I think there are about seven of those citations on Mickelson. Um, there's still, stop signs coming on to Mickelson is an issue.
Yep.
And, uh, the speed seems not to be an issue at all.
Well...
Don't argue.
You can argue, but what you see, you're there, you're there all the time, I'm there part of the time, but... Um, there's only, the, the bad thing about Mickelson, and trying to enforce the speed laws there, there, there are not really any places I can park that people can't see. Unless, I, like I said, the stop signs are easy, cuz, you know, usually they're not looking anyway, or... They're definitely not looking right, so if I can park way down on the east, or the west side, the best, at the very minimum, they're gonna check right before they burn out there, cuz that's the only thing they're worried about, you know, as opposed to not stopping at the stop sign. So they're not gonna look right, so they never see anyone.
Does, does the unmarked title have radar in it?
We used to have an unmarked road rated car, colored road rated car, this is kind of one of those things, we got complaints, we go out there and use, but we haven't had them for a while.
Yeah, it's kind of tough, it's kind of tough to track stuff.
We got speed trailers, Doc, we can, you know, city has a speed trailer, we got a speed trailer, I'd be interested to know, uh, you know, when, if we plan on, or when we plan on, getting the signs that actually display what your speed is to help you slow down. And...
Yeah, those are crazy.
I think the word's ready, I talked to, you know, I have coffee in the morning about 8:30, but, uh, at Hardy Stop, and we had some conversations about, they know, it's, the word's getting out, slow down in Mickelson, and to tell you, dude, I don't see anybody at this point that's from Monahan, it's a lot of residents that are doing it.
All right, any...
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Be back.
All right, into reports, no plan on going through the full report, um, unless anybody has questions or you have anything you wanna point out in there, otherwise we won't jump to pay applications. So, what have you got covered there?
I had one thing in the report that came up today, we had a meeting with city staff on Mannamark Avenue, and we showed them layouts and, um, kind of what we're moving forward with design, and we had a question that we thought maybe we'd bring to the council in regard to sidewalks on Mannamark Avenue. Right now we're designing sidewalks in another project, sidewalks along the, would be the east side along Gulf Course side, and we're, we're kinda wondering as staff if that's something that we should pursue, or, or, if we didn't know what your guys' thoughts would be on sidewalks out there.
Yeah, I talked to Teresa a little bit after, after you guys had your meeting today, and, you know, so...
And just to give you a...
Any other city street we put sidewalks on both sides?
Yeah, like on Mickelson, Mickelson Road, wherever we had developed property, we would put, we were putting the sidewalks in, and then those properties get assessed for that sidewalk. So using that same idea, you know, the Gulf Course is still a developed property, we would not be putting it against the Hugo, Ha- Hugo?
Haugel.
Haugel property, cuz they would, once they developed, they would come and build their sidewalks at that time.
Same thing for Naps?
Same thing with Naps.
You wouldn't do it, they'd do it when they develop it.
Yeah, so we're kinda wondering if we wanna use the same approach on this project, or do something different than that, and so we didn't, we, that would bring that to you folks, just to help us.
What about the houses that are there, will they get sidewalks?
Yeah, so if we do it the same way we did Mickelson, they would get sidewalks, and then they would get assessed for that sidewalk.
And that's our name.
I'm just curious why we wouldn't add sidewalks on the Gulf Course side?
I mean, well, I think it's, I think it's just a political thing, if you ask me, I mean, engineering-wise, it does make sense to probably have sidewalks on that side because it connects to the, the Partee, or I say, in the road there, and gets, gets them connected in the path into town, um, so for that reason, it makes sense.
I mean, if that's not gonna go down progress, then you're gonna have a gap there.
Right.
But you, I mean, you say political, Mitch, and I understand, I, I assume you're thinking that somebody at the Gulf Course is gonna get upset because we made them put in sidewalks.
That's the, yeah, that's...
But you also, you, you're not thinking about the political part, where somebody's gonna say, why do I have to pay for it, but the Gulf Course doesn't?
Right.
That's political too.
That's right, that's why we're asking, yes. So...
I think...
Hi, I agree with you.
Okay.
So has there been right-wing discussion with the Gulf Course?
I haven't had any yet, but we were planning to meet with them and review the plans with them here, next week, and so we kinda wanted to have that, just know how we wanted to approach them on that, with their subjects, so...
Right.
If anybody... I, I don't know, I have a different take, because if anybody wants to talk to me about it, they can park in front of my house on the bed, on the street I paid for, and then they can walk with me on the sidewalk I paid for, so, that's the way I see it, so...
The other thing to consider be a possible path, like walking path, make a little wider sidewalk in there, uh, to connect future trail system or something.
I still, I still think we need to address how we're gonna get up to the sports complex that would like that, cuz, I, I think, you can't get there through Naps right now, can you?
You don't have...
But, no, no, they don't wanna be connected, you still have to get, they're still south of...
But if, but if you look at getting up there, up north on Mannamark, Naps, and then cut it across, I mean, in, in my mind, that's a lot better than trying to go from Second Street through either one of those ditches, either up on, what is that, it's not ninth, it's, uh...
Oak, Oak Road?
Oak, or, or on the oil.
Western Road.
I mean, those are all big money projects, so...
Yeah, I mean, you tend to end up having, you know, your wider sidewalks along your two-rail roads and your, your collector road, as we call them, which Mannamark would serve that purpose of a collector road. Um, you know, I think, I think at this point we'll go forward with just doing exactly the way that on Mickelson Road and implementing sidewalks where it's developed, knowing that the undeveloped properties will build their sidewalks when they develop.
I'd consider the Gulf Course developed.
I do too.
Okay.
So this is just on the north side of Highway 38, right?
Yes, yeah, we're starting on Highway 38 going north to, to the northern city limits, just, which is just north of Partee, and so, basically the whole corridor will have sidewalks except for Hugo's land, and Haugel's land, and Naps land.
So just, the, uh, when you guys did that up there, the construction right away?
Yep.
That basically, you know, was along, kind of, kind of, cut into the ditch there by the T-boxes, so would the sidewalk go...
Pretty cool, that sidewalk, or the T-boxes, actually encroaches into that right away a little bit. But, and so we'll be, that's about where that sidewalk would end up.
Say again, about where?
Uh, okay, there's a, there's a T-box right there.
T-box, yeah.
And there's a sidewalk, that kind of a path that kinda goes right around the T-box, that path encroaches into the right of way.
It does.
Yep, so that, that, that path where it makes that horseshoe...
Yes.
About right where we'll be holding that sidewalk, so it'll tie in to the city sidewalk.
Pretty much be pretty close together.
Yep.
Okay?
That what you...
Yeah, I can just see Gulf Cars going down there.
I was thinking the same thing, we should maybe try to keep a gap in there, put some fence or barrier in there.
I mean, they do it now, they come out, they come into the road, drive down the road back in, if you got a nice...
Yeah, I don't have a good solution to that.
I, I don't think anybody at Gulf Cars is gonna pick a sidewalk over a street. I'll bet you $100, you put that sidewalk in, I'll see there's on there, every day.
You don't think they'll get down to the street? You're right, yeah, they don't drive on my sidewalk, they drive on the street.
Well, but it's different.
They'll come out of there, and then take the sidewalk down to the highway. Catch the T-box.
Oh...
He's, he's right on that one more, he's spot on.
So I don't know, I think my only concern is how to even print that.
We can...
I wanna see it there, don't get me wrong, but that's my concern.
Well, well, don't worry.
We can head up with them and see if there's some work, solutions that create some sort of separation here, what do you think? I mean, it's so close, there's...
Or fence.
Yeah.
I think you need some...
Split real fence, or some...
You got, you got little spikes in your car?
Yeah, road, yeah, road spikes.
Spikes, yeah.
Spikes on the sidewalk.
I feel like a curve, yeah. That was one thing I wanted to hit on there, man, and you can get into the action items.
Okay, that's for you approve, engineering agreement for sanitary sewer extension? Motion, second question? Do you have a motion, second, already, on the sanitary extension?
No, we don't.
Oh, I thought you said that, did I hear that? Do you have a motion?
I'll make motion.
There you go. Is that second? Second. Discussion?
I do have a discussion, um, there's, there's two contracts here, right, Mitch?
Yes.
One is for the sewer, the other one's for...
The other one is for that area behind Kelly Pond Edition, that John...
Right, my question for that.
Okay, this first one is for, to run the main line heading, heading north, right?
Yep, to the industrial park, yeah.
Any other questions? And what was our path there again, I'm sorry, I should've...
There's an exhibit at the end of it, that shows kind of the layout of what we're proposing at this point, we are thinking that we're probably gonna end up on the east side rather than the west side, as this is shown, um, you know, that'll, once we get it in design, that'll, we'll fine tune that. You see that exhibit if you guys like?
I'm gonna go to my park gap here.
Is that on the west, west side of the road is what you're...
Oh, okay.
That's what, that's what this is showing, but we're thinking we're gonna end up on the east side.
All right, the easier work with the properties on the east side.
The east.
All, all that money, all that money, and we gotta do this?
I don't... Should be able to flip that without...
You should be able to, but, you know, have a little bit of your paper.
Send it to me, portrait.
I don't know how to do that, I'll shut the whole thing down if I try to do that. It's a honor, I got this one.
Alright, we got a motion, a second, we got any more questions, discussion? Now, we'll vote. Mine?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
No.
Alright, we got the engineering agreement for Lot A, D restriction.
So, approve.
Second. Discussion.
I do have some discussion on this Mitch, because I know when we talked about this. I forget, when, when this got brought up in discussion, I don't know who from Stockwell Engineers, when we were talking about who's gonna pay for what and how this was all gonna work out. But I vaguely recall somebody saying, ah, it's gonna be cheap. Ah, it's gonna be not gonna be much. But I'm not sure if this is the number.
Oh, oh, I guess I don't like that conversation, this is the conversation.
You weren't there during that conversation? You don't think you were?
That wasn't me at that one.
Yeah, John, John was here.
It wasn't John?
It was John, John was here.
Cause, does anybody else remember that? Ah, anything about the Naps. It was one of those.
I think that when I originally asked Mitch about it, he, he quoted me about four thousand and this is, four thousand, so that's pretty close.
And we really don't know, I mean, this is such a unique deal, I'll be, we're really hourly, we mostly don't know how hard it's really gonna take. It could be less than that.
Okay, so forty, four thousand bucks is equivalent, that won't be much.
John said, yeah. We just threw one hundred twenty-one down, so it's kind of getting much.
It all adds up, it all adds up, it's very simple. This actually should've just been a rider on the first one, just like, yeah, we'll take it, that's one of those, ah, we'll take care of it. For four thousand dollars, we'll take care of it. Alright, that's, I just remember the conversation, and I remember somebody rushing it off, but it.
Well, I will pass that along.
You pass it.
I think that's a guy whose name we see on these documents.
I have a feeling that when you pass that along, Mr. Brown will say, well, that is, that is a deal, that's half price.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, we'll vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mine?
Alright.
At least I remember it correctly.
And application number eight, for Sika? Eighty-two thousand eight twenty-two fifty.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
This is about it from these guys till next spring, probably?
Yeah, they're just, I talked to them today, they're just getting boxes fabricated, they'll probably be delivering those in March.
Is that Gager, who's doing that?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's some gas, yeah. Here's some of them, yeah, they're just kind of getting them the box building.
Are they gonna be preformed walls or are they gonna be the whole box closed?
The whole thing's precast, they come in.
The thing's precast.
Yeah, they come in like four foot segments.
Oh, they're just gonna build?
Yeah.
The four foot chunks and then just complicated like Legos? That's what I understand.
Alright, that will vote. Mine?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Brenman?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright Craig, um, this is any high points in your report you'd like to go over, I know we've got your.
No, nothing in my report itself, unless somebody has questions for me about that or something.
Did you guys get the blade, please?
Um, we got it straight, we got the part off, got it straightened, um, brought down to Beaverville to have a little more reinforcement underneath just because it would be a weak spot now, so tightened that up. And then, uh, Neil went and got a couple of bolts ordered for it, so.
Oh, was it one of the braces underneath the plow?
Yeah, it's the bottom of the plow, the one bolt broke, and then that put all the pressure on it, but bent the bottom plate now. So, the pivot area on it.
Where did that happen at?
Uh, he said he's going by Third Street, um, coming across, and he's straightening up the blade just to push the snow across. Must've caught the asphalt just right. Caught it, he said he heard it pop and seen the mold flying and Jesse.
So, so it wasn't, it wasn't a speed bump per se?
No, it's, it's.
The word was used with valleys, is what I'm remembering.
Yeah, it was two more valleys. Where he caught the asphalt and that. Seems like every year we're gonna catch something with one of them.
Good job, trying to think. I apologize for my brother-in-law, I'm not moving his truck, so Jesse had to move around it.
It's a, it doesn't say drop block, it just says block. We have one second, Tom?
It's okay, they just started agreeing about where to find it and pack it, so.
So, uh, so I have a snow, uh, question.
Okay.
I noticed that, uh, road grader goes past my road and flings snow pretty good. So, uh, my, uh, my snow blowing person, we're getting the snow blown out of the sidewalk, and then somebody comes by with the road grader and fills it back in. Man, that sounds like a complaint to me. And guess who's gonna end up paying for it? Me.
Sounds like your gun is about here.
It sounds like a personal problem, doesn't it?
Tell you how many times this happens to me.
I will notice, I have noticed, now wouldn't that pay? You come down the street pretty good pace compared to what you've done in the past.
That's what I was waiting for, see the apartment streaming while passing past.
I was about to ask Tyrone if you've been out there, if you have radar.
It's so deep, you can't get over the windmill if you don't go fast.
Boy, that really blew, you notice that, it really blew in. Holy smokes.
No, yeah, they have to go fast.
I bet Marty was really.
If I'd say fast, well, fifteen maybe.
Oh, yeah, anyway.
Only, only in fifth gear they did.
Really?
Wow.
I got, I feel awful for all you guys, I need to stay home and watch that snow blow.
Alright, those are the questions, we've tried for two days. Alright, you got a piece on there to review and proof that board position with DNR?
Yeah, I had a gentleman, Rob Kite, with, uh, he's been at DNR for years in the water quality area, and then he does a lot of the testing and certification, trains that stuff throughout the state. Called me up, um, earlier in December, uh, they have a vacancy coming up on the Board of Operators Certification, and he is wondering if I'd be interested in that. And I had told him, I said, I'd like to talk to the mayor, Teresa, about first, and go to the council and make sure everybody's okay with it if I do. Um, they meet twice a year, um, usually it's during the conferences, um, just before the conference, so that way you don't, you know, you're not an extra day somewhere.
You're there anyway.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to allow Craig to participate in the BNR Board of, what'd you call it, Operators?
Board of Operators Certification.
Second.
Get yourself a point, or are you already, is it a shared thing or what?
Um, not sure yet, I know Rob was the one called me the other day again to see where I was at with it, so it sounds like it's properly.
Maybe you could help steer home your levels. Cause it hurts.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Mine?
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Alright, same thing with finance officer report Karen, if there's any high points you want to cover, or if you're gonna get questions about the senior report? Otherwise, we'll move to.
Pardon, you're not gonna say anything?
Seven, two thousand nineteen municipal election day.
What am I supposed to be looking at?
I do, I do have questions.
You have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, um, and my steer towards Teresa since, poor Karen's only been here a few months. Okay, so, I'm looking at cash balances, uh, does this include, okay, it's November, never mind, I answer my own question. Um, hang on, there was other stuff though. Expenses. From the general fund, year-to-date, we've exceeded it by over two hundred thousand dollars. Was that the appropriations that we made in the last couple of months? It's really, at, at year-end, two thousand seventeen, we're at basically two million dollars, okay? Uh, year-to-date, we're at two million, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and plus change.
So, biggest thing you added to the general fund after the budget was the sports complex grading, and that came out of the general.
Okay, and I knew there was something there.
So, all those expenses are in there.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't have a chance to get that itty-bitty on it, so.
Yeah, so, um, like, all of Mickelson Road, that's in a different fund, so that's not shown, here you go, that's its own separate fund with its own revenue and expenses going up, but, yeah, we did, yeah, we did pay out more expenses, but you guys had a lot of stuff too.
We spent some money and I don't, I just wanted to just, if there's any concerns you have. Okay.
Don't spend too much, no.
Now, give me that chance to say that, okay? Mine, thank you, move on, I'm sorry.
Alright, we, yeah, to set the twenty nineteen municipal election date, looks like you're suggesting April nine, two thousand nineteen, that should be the date. Just gonna make a motion to set it to that current.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, call favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Teresa, your report, anything outside of what we have that you want to touch on?
Um, not really, just wondering if you have any questions? I kind of put in a little blurb, we had an ISO audit, and this is different than when the fire department had it because they're looking at two different things. Um, fire department, they were looking at, um, you know, uh, the protection classification, our fire services. This audit was looking at what we have in place for building codes and building permits and what we're checking and what we're not. So, um, me and Paul Clark went through, the lady thought it, we, right now, we're going to get a lower rating, or higher rating, which is what we don't want, we want to be as low as, than what we are at right now. And that's mainly because we are not, um, Paul Clark isn't reviewing the residential permits before they're issued, the, the full set of plans. We've only been requiring commercial ones, but, um, we've talked with her, um, and Brandon wasn't doing it, everybody kind of got mixed on it because they didn't require this four years ago, but now they're requiring it. So, just to let you know, we are, um, addressing the comments, and we're gonna start reviewing residential plans too before they should permit. So, that means contractors are gonna have to bring those plans to us, which they're not used to doing, but it'll bring our ISO rating back.
And the, and the ISO is currently at four point oh?
Four, you know, four and five are two classifications, yeah, so. So, we are addressing with them and we'll change whatever we need to, to make sure we stay on top of that.
What's the time for those changes?
Um, March eighteenth, we have to get our plan to them, they'll review the plan, and then we can, we got a year to implement it, any changes, so.
So, don't the insurance companies look at it once a year, i.e. right now? I mean, so.
Yeah, they'll take our current rating, and we've got it, like I just said, a year to implement the new stuff before they'll make any changes to it.
Okay, okay, so.
Good, alright, thank you.
Anything else, then? Anyone have any other questions? Alright, well, Ron?
Got nothing in our old business, our new business, we've got appointments for planning stability, we're still linking to the twenty-third. We've got four people that are up this, this time around, um, people that were up, Tony Randall, Eric Parker, Stephanie Olson-Block, and, um, and John and Ken. Talked to everybody who's been on, and, um, John has, has been talking with us for quite a while already and said, hey, this is gonna be my last term on P&amp;Z, kind of just ready to, ready to roll off of that, let somebody else have a chance in that. So, my appointments are Tony Randall, Eric Parker, Stephanie Olson-Block, and Nathan Lineback. He's actually a gentleman we discussed for a council position at one point, and, um, he is, lives here in town, he's, he grew up in the Wall Lake area, moved back here, I mean, a couple of years, or more than a couple of years back, twelve to thirteen, he got back. He's in your ward, my name is Johnson. Um, works for Renew Energy, which is, uh, the wind, kind of known for wind power, they do wind power, solar power, you know, electrician for that. So, um, he'd be, he's happy to do it, interested in doing all of that, so. So, those are my four questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Okay. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Mine?
Yep.
Thank you, P&amp;Z members, for all the work you guys do. We appreciate it. Next up? Housing of HADF interns.
Alright. We need it off wherever we need to go, I guess.
I'm gonna discuss very well. Um, Jesse kind of brought this up, um, last meeting, and he talked about, um, the HADF had put in their budget, um, money, they asked for money for a summer intern to help Jesse with certain tasks this summer. Um, they want to utilize, um, you know, an intern from one of the colleges or whatever. Before we move forward with it, or before he moves forward, we want to make sure we have a place to put him, and they want to put him down here at City Hall. We want to make sure council's okay with housing him here. Probably the only spot we got, and we just kind of talked about it some, is we use that small room and, you know, mainly he just needs, Jesse's a table to sit at with a, a phone and.
No window?
A computer and, uh, he's, he's gonna be very minimal, but, but we do have, you know, the phone line connections there and the internet connections for his computer and stuff, so I mean, we could set up a table with a chair and.
Does the telephone system have enough ports?
Yeah, we got four lines now.
I mean, port for a direct extension for a phone?
We won't have a direct extension for him, just specifically.
I understand that, in the, in the switch, in that room that he's gonna be sitting in.
All four lines go into there.
Okay.
To come into City Hall.
But you gotta have a port to put a phone into the switch?
Yes, we have ports.
You have enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have. We have four ports, two lines per port, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, where, I'm gonna tie this together a little bit, I'm sorry, I just, um, so, sorry, we're getting a little, uh, little, little big here, but I'm trying to visualize where Nathan's gonna be and where said intern's gonna be. I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm just, you probably just pointed it out, but, but you, both of them say you're eventually gonna be in a small meeting room.
No, they're not both, so, the, our new recreation director, he's going to be in the small workroom, which is just right north of where Karen is.
Yeah.
Where we have files and the facts, you know, so on this side of the hall.
Yeah.
We'll clean that out and we'll set up an office there, so he'll have an actual office, a desk or whatnot. The file cabinets that are in there, mainly it's supplies and file cabinets that have, we will move them to a small meeting room, so there'll be more files and, you know, stuff in there, so there'll be more stuff in that small meeting room, but we should still have room for him.
Okay.
So, we'll move all those file cabinets, the supplies into that room, and have to set him up there, so.
Okay.
But, I think it's doable, I mean, we're looking at six weeks, eight weeks.
Yeah, it's over.
And we got a landline for Nathan too.
Yes, that's all set up with landlines and teleports and that one too.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, I think it's doable.
I trust you, just trying to, trying to get my head around. Craig, you're a little.
They're pretty much out of room, I think.
It's time for you to start getting some engineering on that one. Push the wall out here.
We could put you and Karen in the same office.
We could.
Just throwing it out there, I think we can put on one more city employee.
Hey, you and Roger shared that little room for a long time.
Hopefully, the next one you put on is on the field.
We could tear all the walls off and put cubes in.
You could probably clean your office, Craig, and get two more people in there.
Yeah, no one would want to go on there.
I mean, if you clean it, I mean, right now, there's not even room for you.
I can find everything I'm looking for, I'm running out.
Terry's laughing, he knows what I'm talking about.
Quite honestly, though, we've, we've got about half the square footage in this room, but it's not, you know.
We rearranged a little bit. We rearranged a little bit. We could move the council chambers back to Teresa's office like it used to be, and then just put cubicles in here.
Yeah.
We could really staff up.
Hey, yeah, we could meet outside, yeah.
We could green offside.
All right, do you need the motions or anything like that, or just, um? Feeling good with that?
Green light.
I, I just, the green light, uh, we're good, just don't wanna need.
Green light.
Any, any concerns with that, so.
Green light, go time.
Back anywhere you can find a room.
All right.
Any questions? So we do have executive session for personnel, do we have executive session for legal? You know what we do unless somebody else has something.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You'll be seeing me work in the weekends, but it won't be on the hard part, it'll be on the county side.
Yeah, how is it, Neil?
I mean, on the inside.
I was wondering if I got TMJ's or Tom, I was like, I'm just considering to get to, this hasn't been Omar, we're dead in gear, so. My dad's doing surgery.
Is he?
Yeah, they can figure out me out there.